I've seen your name in the.
Yeah, dress.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
There's some issues here.
Happily.
Yes.
Business ended.
Okay.
But not, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks for the answer.
We're gonna call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone. Everybody signed in? Adam Clark?
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Sir Malloy.
Here.
Sir Fernandez.
Here. Okay, so we're gonna, agenda item one is to dispense the reading of minutes. At the workshop on July fifteenth and the regular meeting dated July sixteen of twenty twenty five. For two to approve bills. Three to transfer monies is submitted by the county auditor, uh, dates of July ten through the sixteenth of twenty twenty five. As listed. Four, approve additional appropriations submitted by the auditor. Between dates of ten, the July tenth through July sixteen of twenty twenty five. As listed. And again, to approve transfer of appropriations is submitted by the auditor, July tenth through July sixteenth. As listed. Commissioners, I don't know if we have any. Questions about these.
Yeah, just additional appropriations with the auditor. It says to correct the budgetary error. Do we know what that error is or what the? So make sure that's not like add more to the budget or something from budgetary error earlier.
Good question. I think it's one that we have to ask you.
And Christie, if you're listening, can you clarify the first item, one additional appropriations? Correct budgetary error. It's from a journal entry. Out of fund four twenty five. Uh, do anyone know four twenty five is dollars?
Four twenty five is one of my loan, Sheriff Taylor, Commissioner Potters. Um, four twenty five is one of our, uh. Our loans. I wanna say it might be. The engineer's office, I do believe. So probably something happened with it and it seemed to be fixed. That's a four twenty five. That's their account. That's just that.
God, I was Christian.
It's the county engineer garage project.
Yes.
So it.
It's not the office?
It's.
Oh, no, four twenty seven is the office. That's.
I mean, I take that back. I mean, I just.
I know what it is. Never mind sixty two five.
Order.
Yes, that's what this is. Change order.
Oh.
Sixty two thousand dollar change order?
Yeah, we, we, it was actually to our good.
Oh. Social rejection.
Well, maybe they ought to clarify it more.
Yeah, I don't see.
Just putting it on.
Let's get a clear, see if we get a clarification before tomorrow. That is.
I know. It was on.
Yes.
And then on.
I think it was on the agenda last week.
It was on the last week and we, and I've seen the sixty two thousand for the past weeks.
The chief to approve the chief's order. Like, you know what I mean? This'll just be the official.
Here she comes.
Okay, she's. She ran.
I just took the elevator. I didn't, I didn't upstairs. I wouldn't be able to talk to you. So, yeah. Uh, Christie's the Starey Auditor's Office. That's the engineering, uh, office construction fund. There was, it was over budget. Um, we should cut a little timing difference. I put in to fix the appropriations for it so that we would balance off. At the same time, Sarah canceled the purchase order. So we kind of both did the same thing all at the same time. So now we have to fix. My original fixing of appropriations. That's all. It's just a clerical error that we were both on the same timeframe. We were taking care of the same time and I didn't know. We still had a little.
I.
Yeah, I just thought that we needed to correct the order. Or, I'm sorry, the appropriations.
To decrease.
It was a timing, yeah, to be anything, yeah.
Increasing. It's a decrease.
Mm-hmm, yes, it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome to share. You're welcome to share.
Bye, Christine.
I tried. Okay. Uh, agenda.
That's why I was on. Hey.
Yeah. Okay, agenda item six is decrease appropriations submitted by the auditor July tenth through July sixteen. The amount of sixteen sixty two twenty four. Um, seven, to adopt the resolution approving is submitted. List labeled ORC five seven oh five point four one D. May of twenty twenty five of purchase orders. To various vendors as then and now. Purchase orders in compliance with. LRC listed. What, what is that? Pure then now. I don't see that very often.
It's literally, so, yeah, they, they put it on. It's just something that they put on the agenda so that we do not get named for. Having a purchase, what they call them, then announced, simply because. If it's done after we've already had, they don't like. You literally have to do your purchase order first. So they're, they're labeling things then announced so that the auditor understands that it, it's happened. Which is, that's our situation. So if they.
Absolutely.
If they put it on here, then, then we vote for it.
Yeah. Um. Agenda item eight is to adopt the resolution by the board of commissioners. Entering on his journal, the filing of a petition for annexation. Seeking annexed property situated in the tangible Weathersfield. Further being known as partial numbers two four dash three one zero nine zero zero zero. Two four dash three one one three zero 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 and two four dash three one one four. Zero zero of Giermar Properties, Inc. It comprises a total of one hundred twenty two point six three two acres. As described and submitted. In the exhibits listed. Uh, territory. Both in Weathersfield and contiguous to the municipal corporation, the city of Niles. I'm not familiar with this. Does? Anybody know what this is?
Is this a type one, type two, they say?
Regular.
Regular?
And?
And this came from Niles?
This came from attorney Tom Nader. He submitted this last Thursday.
Yeah.
So it has to be done on the next June back to receive petition.
Gary New Brown, San Antonio, what part of Weathersfield is this entity?
Uh. That I'm not, yeah. I mean, I can go get it if you want.
Pretty sizable, one hundred.
Yeah, one hundred twenty two acres. I would advise Weathersfield, I'm saying this, I mean, yeah, we'll accept it for the filing, but we're gonna have to, of course, this is. It's our hearings and all that type of stuff, I'm sure. Yeah, because we gotta get Weathersfield side of this, whether they want this or not. That's a pretty big chunk that we can wilder township.
This was submitted, uh, before, I wanna say the end of the year last year and then withdrawn in December, so.
But we just, we. You believe it, Mike, could, could be for water, Gary?
I'll, I'll just want, well, I know if it's around the border to the city of Niles, there may be. You may have some water and sewer and just. Though there's an issue. You know, some piles, but I don't know where it's at.
Yeah.
It's on the fringe of the Niles.
You see them out there? Is there Mr. Rowland there, which is?
That I don't know. Here, I'll go get the, uh, that and give it to you. Do you want me to undo it and then if you want to see?
Well, I just do. Eventually have to get some input on this from their administrator or. Just needs.
Okay, Mike, well, she's gone. We can go to nine.
Right, number ten, I authorize the manager's president for the county commissioners to institute the Ohio Department of Transit. Of transit. A standard twenty twenty, twenty twenty six certification insurance. For the period of July first, twenty twenty five to June third, I'm sorry, July first, twenty twenty five to June thirty, twenty twenty six. So this is just a routine. Back of the gym, they'll be signing. Uh, Bill Downs will also be signing that it is for us to get our.
Okay.
So, yeah, we've got to speak. Commissioner Malloy signed a lot of.
Good. See what we say.
So many.
Mike, we'll move on. Tim, I'm very certain.
I want to add this.
I'm sorry.
I have one other thing I want to.
Oh.
It's okay.
Yeah.
This is bills here. Um. This is kind of strange. Lisa's already put all the information into the document. So tomorrow we have to meet us with KFC. Those are signed.
It's not an issue.
So that way we get. Out, get a better of that.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Mike?
Uh, Mike Solinsky, former county building official. Commissioners, this is the, uh, we had a, we had a bid opening. And this is still more the eleventh district, uh, security fence. It is tag or excavated. We, we had a bid opening, uh. And two bids received. Tag or excavating costs is right, right at the engineer's estimate. Uh, it's. It's within, within the fund of the limits. This is just for the security fence. So get the security fence put in and then I'll be back for the second part of the paving. Since. That project. This is just for the security fence.
Sheriff Taylor, commissioners, that this fund, it is, it was their original.
Yes. This is the.
That's their fund.
Their capital improvement fund.
So.
No general fund money for.
Right, they had a little bit left over. As a matter of fact, there'll be approximately sixteen thousand left over.
Right.
Yeah.
If things go well, plan. No changes.
Let's hope.
Yes.
Yes.
So we'll have, we'll have, say, let's say we have a sixteen thousand. Left over in their fund. And then, then we come back and we ask for the paving. Let's say the paving is fifty. It's gonna get split among the five counties. But it's not an even split. Let's just say it is. That's ten grand piece. So those are the kind of numbers. So I'll take the sixteen off, then it's gonna be less than that.
Right.
But I'll, I'll have all those numbers for you when I come back.
So, like, what type of fences is imagined? Yeah, it'd be electric in the other one. It's.
Yes, it's got the sliding gate. Okay. We've worked with the city warrant, because the city warrant occupies the building to the right as you pull in. So you pull in, you, you know, you put your numbers in the gable slide. There's, there's also electric strike on one of the, 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 the man door gates. It'll, it'll, it'll entirely encompass the back party. And then there's some other issues we had to work through, but we've worked through all those issues with the courts. And, uh. They're happy. Ready to move on. Yeah, it's been a while, Mike.
Paving. On that one. Um. Was there something with the fence not going up for the paving or was that reversion?
We wanna put the fence up first.
You want to get our.
First. That these contractors, you know, have to have a look at what they're gonna do.
Commissioners, paving that's paved too. That one, so.
There was an issue with some settlement in the part.
Right.
We'll address all those issues before we come back to the pay. This is the fence. It's just gonna go on the perimeter. It cuts through, you know, the entrance for the sliding gate. Other than that, it follows the. Fine. Insert guard rolls up all the way around, so it follows the perimeter part.
There's more involved in any of this, all as far as the painting or the.
Excellent. As, well, we, we've, we've been in discussions with them. They waived building permit fees technically by our building code. That's an eight foot fence required to build a permit. They waived that for us. They waived their contractual registration for us. So, so they've been very gracious so, so far.
Sir Park, Sir Parking Lot, correct?
Part of it is. And then we're gonna open up. If you go there now, there's guard roll that separates the two part. When we get done, there'll be a fence that isolates the, uh, the appeals court parking lot. And we're gonna take two sections of guard roll down so you, they'll be able to eat ingress and egress out of our. Entrance and out through the back. Right now, they've only got one way out.
And we're okay with paving the parking lot that we don't know?
Yeah, um, Commissioner Phil Danso, prosecutor's office. We have a easement on that for the use by the court. We. Were granted that easement when we built that court complex many years ago, and I've worked with the city on that. Um, and because it is our existing easement, we have no problem paying, paving it. We also, they also have no problem with us enclosing it. With that fence based on our current easement that we have. So it is a recorded interest we have on that property.
And we paved in their portion of the parking lot also?
You know, only the portion that we have for the court. Uh, not the, the rest of theirs over behind that other building. We're not touching.
And this has been in the works for, I think, quite a long time, years, right? Up years.
About two years, yeah. But there's a lot of design, a lot of.
Changes.
Changes, things where they wanted.
Right.
A lot more expensive where.
You see, yeah, we've. It's coming to the.
Okay, thank you, Mike. That's not. Yes.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, you wanna go back to the?
Uh, I don't understand.
See this. Why didn't remember what you said?
All right, Commissioner, security across the area, engineer, that area of Weathersfield town. The, the, the annex. This is on Main Street coming out of Niles. If you're heading down past you, the Dow Lane, and that's where the area that you chew there is. So. It's on the, uh, west side of the road, so that old republic still properties. It looks like, I, I can't make it out, but. You know, that's what it's leading to. So it's in that area. I don't know if it's the exact old republic still property. But anyway, that is, uh, the area that is. Uh, built up to be on Niles water, but just built that heat, sewer projects. And I'm not sure what's a sewer situation. But you're more. That's the area that they're in on that way.
I'm wondering whether they. Whether you're looking. But we'll find out. Thank you, Jerry.
Okay.
Um. Mr. Pay. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Becky. Hi, Becky Speralian, Director of Fiscal and Planning at Children's Services. Uh, we're just requesting that the, we're, kind of commissioners, adopt a resolution to proceed if the submissions, the electives, electors. Question of renewing our tax levy, our two milth twenty. For the general election in November of twenty twenty five, the audit business office is certified, the amount we collect. From this two milth tax levy, there's a five year levy. Again, it is renewal, it was approved, meant in twenty twenty six, we do it in twenty twenty seven. So just asking if you approve this and then the, then. Take support elections to be certified so we can go on the event out. Yeah, it is a renewal and we certainly appreciate your support.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay. Moving on to Gary.
All right, Gary New Brown, San Antonio, engineer, uh, commissioner for, well, I. I give you a heads up about this last week, but this is, uh, according to the contract. Construction contract for help to Gilbert project. In an engineer's estimate of eleven point six million. Or, like, they made it eight point seven three. Was two, eight, five, six million below the engineer's estimate, so this is probably a great savings for, uh. More target residents out there when it comes time to pay back that debt. I mean, we're on this, we're going to close the, uh. Engineer's estimate, so this is a great thing.
And, and I think it's great, because also I just think we have to. Be wary of any change orders. Now, usually they've been, and then they do. Come along with a whole bunch of change orders, so. We need. We need the whole thing to this eight, 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 eight.
Right, well, it is. A lot of that comes down to strength of the engineer, design drawings. Whether or not they picked up everything that was out there, uh, make sure they didn't miss anything. And that's when. If there's something wasn't shown on the drawings and they go out there and, or something that. They weren't expecting to see, then that word would be right as a problem. They, they're pretty good engineering, uh. Uh, it, it. Had good, uh, success with them in the past. So, I'm hopeful. But Gary, I'm hopeful that, uh, we're onto.
Yeah, it's.
Anything unexpected out there.
I get a question. We get eleven point eight million dollars in funding sources for it.
Yes.
They're estimating to be eight point seven.
Yeah, the remainder of that was engineer. Easements, uh, all the other ancillaries, and there's some contingency buildings. For this resolution, this is mostly to send down to Ohio EPA. They need to finalize what their, what their amounts are until you come down to six. Four, three, one, seven, one, eighty. That's the number they're looking to get out of the resolution. That includes the entire project cost, not just the construction.
Okay.
So we can't take that three hundred thousand back from our part?
No, that was already spent. That's, yeah.
Okay.
That was on.
Good. Thank you.
Oh, item thirteen, uh, this is that settlement for, uh. P cause. Hot Whisk, building, pouring, phone, product, liability litigation. And this is, yeah, P cause chemicals. And our digital destination is. Three thousand five thirty four ninety one. Understanding where you are going to get further destinations in the future, but this is the initial one. I have a quick, I had a thought on how much we can expect out of this over the years. Bill? Anything that?
Um, I don't. My understanding is that Mr. Blair was the, the, kind of the lead.
Yes.
Person with the law firm on this, so I haven't seen the final total numbers of expectation.
Yeah, I, I don't, they haven't really said, this is. We'll take the thirty five hundred.
So then I could sign it after we've done it. Yeah, this would, yeah, this would authorize you to do that. Okay, thank you, Gary. Um. Gary, do you wanna handle these next couple or?
Number fourteen, we just needed to, thirteen, eighteen. We just needed to indicate. Um. How we were going to source this through opioid funding. What we have now is the oh seven, we call it the oh seven nine fund, which is the national, no, that's, I'm sorry, oh seventy eight is national. We needed to differentiate and indicate which fund we were going to use the opioid monies to. For that Soder, so, yeah, Soder body, and we needed to indicate which. Now, we're gonna get, so that's all handled. We're going to amend that journal action so that we could put the fund number.
Okay.
Okay, and number fifteen was for Sage Integration. Because I forgot a door, so we needed to amend that journal action to. Indicate that we were going to pay for emergency management agencies front door. So that was. That.
And that? Additional amount is eighty six.
Mm-hmm, eighty six, eighty six nineteen fifty seven. And we have a little bit of funding and another fund that I could move over and that's what we did.
And this is the side door.
I'm not sure. I thought this is fresh.
No, but I mean, I'm commission, uh, no, this.
No, this is for.
He's like. Just, you know, this isn't for the other.
No, that's already been taken care of.
Okay.
Their door just got left off the, the project.
Okay.
We had a lot of emails going back and forth about. They were trying to cut our costs for us, so. Quite a few emails. I missed it. So.
Okay, so you're gonna do their front door, but we're not gonna do their back garage door, man door?
We don't know if that includes that or not. We would have to ask Tim Hannifer if it does include that.
You said right.
Oh, hi, Tim. Hi, hi. Can we confirm about emergency management store if that includes their garage door?
I can confirm.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Jim, check the. The door that leads into the garage and then the man door next to the garage at the corner, she used to get in.
Okay.
For that, I, I would hope that way.
Yeah. Okay. Hey, Mr. Gargano.
Yes, Mark Jargano, JFS. Commissioners, this is requesting the approval of termination of Stacy Cooper as an employee for Trumbull County Department of Job Services. Ms. Cooper was on an approved leave and was supposed to return on July fourteenth. Uh, she did not show up. She did not call. We tried to communicate with her. Uh, there was no response and she was in violation of the, uh, agency's personnel policy. Absence and absence control, which says an employee fails to report to work, he thought. Any notification for three or more consecutive workdays shall be immediately terminated unless the employee can demonstrate. Uh, that there was a sufficient justification for no call and no show. Uh, she did that all last week and we had to have this in on Thursday, but even Friday, we sent her a letter. And she must have got the letter because she's, uh, brought her ID badge and put it in the mail slot over the weekend.
How long was she with?
She, uh, started in, uh, March of two thousand fifteen or two thousand sixteen. She wasn't approved leave. We expected her to come back from her leave, but she didn't. We attempted to communicate with her. She didn't respond, so we had no other choice.
Okay.
Do we still have to talk to her? She just put her badge in?
Put her badge, they sent her a letter saying, you know, this is, it's gonna happen. Uh, your badge, your ID badge, you know. Asked if you returned it. She or somebody over the weekend put it in our mail slot.
Oh, she evidently doesn't want, want the job, right?
Doesn't matter, because.
Maybe she still should try to make contact with him.
Probably attempted.
I mean, I.
You know, she's kidnapped in a truck somewhere and someone turned her badge and turned things. They got the letter.
Well, I don't know.
But, yeah.
Yes.
Well, she obviously got the letter.
Commissioner, somebody, Alex, you can touch with resources. I did speak with Charlie Blockster and resources over at JFS last week. I also asked that we try, again, my. Your, your, you know, has said, somebody go text with her and she never come back, the text, so she is okay. I knew you were gonna ask that.
You know, that.
We do the work for the. No, JFS called and they asked, you know, what. I said, can we just try to just make sure she's okay? And as long as that is, it is what it is. This stuff happens, again, unemployment, both. Is what it is. Um, and we also have to respect that. There might be something wrong outside of, you know, it's what it is, and I, I figured out that, but. Yeah, she is okay. For, I, I knew that was coming, so I get it.
Yeah.
Yes, I do go looking for people. I find them, but again, if they don't answer, they don't answer. They just went with it, so.
Okay. Thank you, John.
And they did. They texted her, so just.
Um. Gary.
Gary, yeah, right here. Thank you, Commissioner. Gary Schaefer, uh, engineer's office. Number seventeen is have to concur with our opposite, closed Phillips Rice Road. That's from, uh, yesterday through on August first. Call with replacement project. Eighteen is to concur with our office, bring the right, if they're mislisted. Nine times, with our office and bring it, as I mentioned, as listed in, I guess, something else. It'll be on next week's agenda, but. Emergency closing on Bellway Road with the railroad tracks. Uh, Norfolk Southern reached out to me yesterday, said emergency closing. Got to get in there, replace the rail and resurface.
Is that what they're doing?
It's gonna be today, open up tomorrow at five. So, yeah, it's gonna be today from eight AM. On Pratt, you know, they'll be, they'll open back up. Uh, we had the locals contact a couple of truck.
Yeah.
Companies that are over there. Um, and then they'll figure out, I mean, this detour applies to, you know, to your average traffic. Our trucks are gonna have to find their own route and get some postings. The overpasses, I think, are bigger, which is a good issue. But it's just one day, so, yeah. I mean, yeah, today.
But it is.
More of the.
It's a busy street.
Yeah, but it's, it's emergency closing, so we really have time to work for, so.
Okay, I saw the crushy, but. You know, but.
But, okay, yeah, yeah, contacted them right away. Thanks to the news stations too, I saw. It printed that out, so we're done, but.
Gary, I have one question. Any word back from the state on, uh, Market Street and, uh?
My past.
There at the interchange. I haven't heard any, no. Well, you know, I.
Well, we have a lot of.
Is that?
Hey, but you're, he's not returning phone calls. Maybe we should write them a letter. Asking him, you know, to clean it up because, I mean, if you go by there, it's, it looks like neither still dumping here. Put an email together and figure it over, at least get that on the record. I mean, it's, it's probably been a good month now.
Yeah, u- usually when they tell me they're gonna respond, they do. In this case, they have, so, yeah, let me. Send out that email soon. We haven't seen any success since you and us. Appreciate it. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Gary. All right, let's go back to sixty if we could for a second. I mean, not, not being in all seriousness. I mean, today's a weird world that we live in, if someone to give up a job every ten years and not even. Call or talk to anybody, I know maybe. There's a situation with, can we at least? Have not wanted someone to do a check the welfare and have an officer get an eyeball on this girl? She's giving up a ten year career. Well, I mean, someone else could text, someone else could drop an idea, someone else could get someone's mail. You know, just to make sure there is anything going on above and beyond. Or just not wanting to work here anymore.
If I may interject, John Gargano, J F S. We sent a letter, we said it, uh, I'll say certified, she did sign for it, it was her signature, or at least it appeared to be her signature. That she received our letter. And that's why I think maybe she returned her ID badge, can we put it there, any, any, uh, county, uh, issued items are to be returned, so. I'm assuming, you know, it's her signature, it looked like her signature, so. Just wanted to let you know.
I understand. I understand, what's the problem, knocking on the door to say, hey, we just got eyeball you and make sure you're okay and then.
Yeah, I don't know, did she find another job? I, I mean, I don't know. We don't, we don't have, oh, Commissioner, we don't know if she found another job or not found another job. Uh, and I understand where you're coming from, but then I think you also put the county and the agency. In potential liability, if you do it for one, you have to do it for the other and every other.
We should do it for every, these are.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying to you, you know, then they may not want. To be, uh. Interfered with, with their own personal life too, so I, I'm just throwing that out, there's, there's some issues you have to look at.
That's understandable, too.
Well, it's a normal procedure.
Uh, so they have texted with her, I. I told you that.
I get that, but anyone can have someone's phone and text back. That's what I'm saying, it's gonna be an abusive relationship, a million things could happen or whatever, or she.
I, I get it, we have a responsibility as an employer, and when you're not coming to work and you're no longer an employee, it's no longer our responsibility. That's all I would say.
No, she's still an employee until tomorrow. I mean, what would be the harm of just having, not only one, have local officer knocking the door and do a welfare check? It's not normal for someone to not show up for work after ten years. And just walk away from it.
It is normal considering the circumstances in that poor not cut top.
Right.
So if you would like to go into an executive session, I would be glad to do that, I'm sure you're.
I think it would be an executive session to talk.
But I am not going to discuss the reasons, uh.
I'm sure you're going to executive session to discuss, but, you know, I don't want to get into.
Well.
Any kind of.
If you dance over, I'll put you on the squad, give you some advice.
Well, I think it, Commissioners, building sort of a prosecute, it just depends on. How you, I, I agree that if there, there's something that you want to talk about that fits within that. Uh, the personnel executive session language, I think that would probably be the appropriate way to discuss it further. Uh, you know, I, I would say that anytime anybody's ever concerned about the welfare of an individual, you could. Reach out to the local law enforcement for a welfare check. Uh, but I, I, I do think it is also, I, I agree with Mr. Gargano, I think it's important also to. Set some standard boundaries for what we do as a county and what we're expected to do as a county. Uh, obviously, I think it's important to help take care of the people who work here, uh, but I think it's important also that no appropriate boundaries of that. As well, so I think if there's any additional things that Commissioners want, either executive session or maybe, uh. You know, some other even private conversation, one on one with Director Gargano would be appropriate, but, uh, from there, I guess that's all the input I really have.
There's not illegal when us checking the welfare employee, is there?
No, there, there wouldn't be anything illegal about calling for a welfare check, I just don't know. Again, if that's, you know, something that the board wants to kind of regularly do or where the boundary is gonna be drawn on that. Uh, but I, I also. I, I'm not sure, again, not knowing any of the circumstances of this employee myself. I don't know if it is something that sometimes people would view that more as an invasion of their. Personal life than, than helpful, but, you know, again, I would never tell anybody not to call in a welfare check if you're legitimately concerned about someone. So I think that's just something you guys want to balance and, and weigh.
Well, why don't you, why don't you have a private conversation with Mr. Gargano and if he answers your question for the new feel. That we need an executive session, we'll call it an executive session.
Yeah, I would feel more comfortable in an executive session, I've got the like.
Let, let Commissioner will only talk with. Director and. Maybe Alex.
I, I'm just asking that the work get all being formed.
Right.
And this is not the place, as history and.
And your opinion is more to.
There is always more to a story, okay, especially when we're dealing with H R matters and people's lives, so let's just leave it at that. Like, I will, that's, I'm sure Director Urbiano would as well. I am in coordination with H R administrator over there, I have talked to her, I am telling you that we have. Again, texted with the employee, she has responded back, she signed certified mail letters, um. If you would like to take it from that's on the pass of the board, but again, I'm not gonna do it publicly, so I'm going to be respectful of people's. Yeah.
Absolutely.
As Mr. Danto. Reiterating.
Okay, I mean, we can always. Call executive session at the meeting if you want.
Sure.
Okay, uh, Tim? Morning? I T?
So this is for Tim Hannaford, uh, Director of I T. Uh, this is for the Marx Tower, there was one piece that. Was towards the end of last year was brought up, then it's got unaccounted for myself, Mr. Hart. Uh. When. They go and turn the power on, we need to have a contractor to connect power to the radio tower and to the water tower. And also to assist with power, uh, distribution, Marx Tower. All of this is contingent on. First energy getting everything up and running. So it's gonna be contingent on getting that Marx Tower going. Uh. This. Spielman Electric is currently out there right now, they've been doing the electric on the water tower they had. Uh, proposed at that time that they could do this, um. They did this back towards the end of the year, so I talked to Sarah yesterday and.
No, we need to think, things need to be. Be connected so that this gets out the project, so that, that is the problem, we got a lot of the door you have it done. We first energy.
Correct.
But now this is the actual hookup.
Yes.
First energy won't do that, we have to have a contract to do that. So it is our.
We have no choice to get it powered up, but. I mean, it has to be done.
I guess, yes.
So.
It's actually. That costly.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this, this is contingent to get that Marx Tower running, so this is something.
Yeah.
That, that the directive right that project.
And it'll be nice to have that tower because, uh, I've been getting a lot of calls, they just cannot communicate.
Right.
In that area properly, so. Yeah, a lot of fire departments, a lot of. Police departments, you know, reached out and said, yeah. You know. You have to, uh, have repeaters in every.
Correct.
Building. This, yeah. Thank you, Tim. Um. Before we move on, I, I want to make a comment. Concerning the senior centers, because the Commissioners. I know you have Danny, I know Commissioner Bernard. We've been getting a lot of calls concerning. Uh, the closure or the cutting of funding to these senior centers. Hundreds of calls, by the way. And I just want to let. All our residents know, especially the seniors, that. We had voted not to cut. And we had voted not to close. So rest assured that those centers are gonna be open, functioning, and we have not cut funding. Matter of fact, we talked about further funding, in-home funding. To amplify the service, we'll see where we're at with that, and I don't know, I've heard, uh. Tale about some other things, I'm not gonna get into it, but. We're not cutting funding. And we're not closing senior centers. Commissioner Bernard, you can maybe elaborate.
They said, uh, they have a three hundred thousand dollar balance in the, that'd be fun, and, uh. As I expressed last week, I'm not for adding those, uh, senior citizen centers, it's. The seniors count on it, and I mean. You said we've received many, many phone calls, uh, during the last week, and, uh. Now, it, it's important to the seniors and, uh. You know, we shouldn't. Um. At their age, you know, they shouldn't have to worry about not being able to go to these centers and, uh. Exercising, uh, eating.
Bingo's, bingo's, that's all they do.
Doing whatever they want to do, I talked to one, I talked to one individual last week, he said he goes to Howland Senior. Center two days a week and he goes to Gerard the other two days a week, so they enjoy it, uh. We probably don't have enough funds to expand them. Centers, but, uh, it certainly, the funds are there to keep the operations.
Yeah. And Commissioners, I had a discussion with Dawn, uh, today, who answers the phone, and she'd been inundated by. Just, I think she said about a hundred and some calls, if she don't get them, Amy's getting them. Um, so. Just to let you know, I instructed her, now, if they want to amplify that further to a Commissioner. That she. Can let them know that the Commissioners. Have instructed her to let them know that. There will be no cuts in the senior centers and we're not closing senior centers, so if it gets further to us, then we can explain that. Um.
And then there was, after we left the meeting, there was a bad rumor. I took a lot of beating up people, said I was, I was against the senior center in Bristol, where, which, where they came from that. Never came out of the meeting we had publicly. Uh, actually, I recommended. Trustee Chickalo to be on the board to get a senior center in Bristol, and then when he resigned. I recommended Roger Peterson from Bloomfield to replace him on the senior center to represent Bristol. So there was no truth to that, I talked to probably eighteen people the other day and explained that, but. It gets on the internet and someone was fed bad information, I think I know the source where it came from. That they were saying, oh, they're gonna shut down all the senior centers, we never said that ever, we never even hinted about that, that was never even brought up by the. Senior levy board or the senior levy coordinator or anybody. Yeah, if anything, uh, we encourage. Senior centers, every town's looking out for their own senior center if they wanted to, it just dilutes the pot that we put, so they can't have more senior centers. Just when they allocate the funds. It would be spread out over a bigger piece of the pie, and which it used to be, we had four, then we had six, now we have. Nine or eleven or whatever it is, it just means everyone gets a little less as they expand, because there's only so much money in the levy. And what the senior levy board wanted to do is just reallocate their portion. They don't want to just keep funding at the same level all these new ones and taking it out of home healthcare, taking it out of other areas, so. What I had said is, we need to trust their opinion. What they say, but at the same time, we never said in here we were cutting anything and we didn't cut anything, I mean, we. Uh, upon Commissioner Bernard's recommendation. Had them dip into their savings or their overage fund that they had, and everybody should have walked away happy that everyone was fully funded and. Home healthcare got a hundred twenty five thousand dollars more than what they had before, which will cut into their couple hundred people on the. The waitlist, which is there, so. We were never against seniors at that meeting and where it came from, I think. I made the comment, we get a lot of calls from home healthcare and we don't get any in senior centers, and I think one of the people here said, oh, well, you will now, because I think they went and stirred the pot and said. These guys are gonna take it away, you know, attack, and there's no reason they needed to, they were gonna use us as a pawn for no reason.
I, I think it's a good point, Commissioner, and that's definitely. This board is not gonna cut senior. Centers. Their funding is gonna stay the same.
Uh, and. We did have an email, uh, from Diane Siskel concerning. A meeting, and I think we're gonna have to really.
Within the next week, she kind of wants them before the, the August meetings.
We'll have to come up with the date so that we could get together. This. Budgetary, you know, process that, of course. These R F Ps are coming up, so. Um. So we'll get with it, Diane's watch, we're definitely gonna get a date together for that. Um, as well as with the auditor.
Um, Commissioners, you need to get with Dawn and check your schedules. Before you settle.
Yes. We will. Okay.
Oh, and before we leave here today, we can set that, and I would also like to set. The budget review meeting that already you already asked us about last week. To, to talk about today to, to look at the budgets, because we have. Many departments coming to us now saying that they're short on budget. And we need to look at the overall big picture things now and do a mid-year review and then reallocate some of these excess funds to some of these sources that need funding.
Sure, you've been working on.
Yeah.
On this.
Yeah, I have a lot of these numbers.
Okay. Um, there is.
And on the senior levy too, you know, we have what, four appointments that were gonna have to be.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm right, so I did talk to one of them, I'm ready to make one recommendation tomorrow. Um. A gentleman that, uh, that I interviewed over the phone, the other three, and I still gotta do more research by tomorrow.
Commissioner Malloy, um, Mr. Hannaford, got that information for you for the emergency management agency, it's the man door next to the garage. Not the garage door, they still have to open that, garage door won't have it, but the man door next to it will.
But I mean, the door that goes from the inside the building to the garage. There's a man door next to the garage, then there's the, the door, if you go out, if you go through E M A to go in the garage, there's another gate right there.
Never going back. Never, never, ever.
Do you know about that one?
I'll find out, okay, yes.
So there's three doors technically.
Yes.
Okay.
Front door and a back door to get in E M A and then a door to get in the garage, which.
The man door is next to the garage door.
Yes.
Okay, okay. So just the third door. Never be entering.
Um, Commissioners, one other. Point I want to make, uh, about the insight meeting.
Core.
Um, it was changed from the twenty second, Lisa, if you could put out an email, because I'm getting like. A lot of calls, people were confused, that, that, you know. They want to make sure that it's on August fifth, which it will be.
Yes.
August fifth at one o'clock. Um. I did speak with the Tribune yesterday. And it came across like, you know, we didn't want the public to be included, it is a public meeting, however. Insight. Requested that they meet with. The Commissioners, in which also we've invited, uh, Senator Moreno's office. We've invited. Com- Congressman Joyce's office, we've invited our state reps. We've invited the mayor of Warren.
Senator Houston also.
Senator Houston, these are elected officials.
There were also members of the nurses' union and the Ohio Nurses Association that wanted to.
And they will attend.
They're gonna want to speak.
And that, and, and we understand that, and. However. The reasoning for the meeting. Is for insight. To allow the elected officials to know what their plan is, we don't know exactly where they're at, we have a lot of questions. The media will be able to question them, there will be a lot of information forthcoming, so, um. You know, the comment about. It not being open to the public's discussion. You know. That is not true, it is that they requested a meeting. With. The elected officials. But it is a public meeting, so they're more than welcome to attend. It's just that there will not be a comment and answer period. Okay?
Commissioner, I do like that Dr. Lapola had a recommendation, be it email us today that we have our meeting. And at the end.
He did.
We, we address questions of the public at the end of the meeting after we get all the facts, and we may not be, we not, may not have a decision on things, whatever. But I think we should open up that way so the, the public does feel. They get their questions answered at the end, or at least throw them out there and then we can research.
Well, I disagree with that, Commissioner, as long as it's with us, not insight, I don't think that they should be put on the spot.
Right.
Uh, but I did speak to, uh, Lapala, uh, Jim Lapala. This morning, he called me and yes, he sent out that email concerning that, so if they do want to. Stick around and question the, you know, the Commissioners, the mayor, the. You know, whomever is in attendance, then I wouldn't disagree with that, I don't think you would.
No, I, I disagree with that, but. You know, just to, uh, elaborate on what you said, we're not sure what the meeting's about.
Right.
They, they called you, they requested a meeting, you said, sure, and. It's, it's their meeting and we're here to listen and ask questions.
We need to get to the meat and potatoes of the meeting, what the elected powers would be, and then at the end. If they have questions, we, we can't make this a big. Hearing.
The bottom line is, are they gonna open, if they're gonna open, when they're gonna open?
Right. And if they have, if they have.
The community wants to know, that's what we want.
And if they have the resources to do so, right?
So you're going to be addressing questions, but you're not gonna have, and insights not going to be addressing.
That'll, that'll be up to them, they can talk to insight at any time, they can only talk to us three, public meeting. So they can, they can. If insights use the leave at the end or whatever, we can gather information from the public or answer questions that we know of, but that's. we can gather information from the public or answer questions that we know of at that time. But then we don't, we can't make them answer questions if they're, if they don't want to. It's our meeting. You know, it's our public meeting that we're calling. So as far as that goes with the public, we should be available to hear what they have to say at the end. If Insight wants to leave and the other people want to leave, that'll be up to them.
I, I, I'm sure the union officials will have a lot of questions for.
Oh, I'm sure. And, and, and that should, that should be in a negotiation process. I don't think it should be, you know, in a setting like this, so.
And I'm, I'm sure the union representative, they have the questions to ask. I mean, and they've already had some negotiations with them, so. Right. That, that's another part of this.
You know, I would ask too. If the union nurses or other people have questions they want us to address with Insight during our meeting, submit them to us in advance and we could bring that up in our part of the meeting where we can address the questions for them for our own benefit and education at the same time. If it's a question that's valid, I, I want to know what, what's valid and, and I think that would be the proper way to go with that.
I, I agree, but I think the union official, they already have those questions from their members, I, I would assume.
They probably do. But I'm saying, if they want us to address it, submit the question to us during our part of the meeting, we could try to integrate them into the meeting.
I guess the main goal is to get it open.
The main goals to open these hospitals, absolutely. And hopefully, you know.
Hopefully they'll have.
Prayers that they will, you know, that they'll have the resources and the funding and I do know that uh, just to revisit it, they are approved with the licensing. So now they have Medicare and Medicaid uh, monies available uh, and, you know. So just no formal date and we'll see what happens.
You know, Commissioner Malloy and I met with them back in February. They said, once they get the license, they could open the next day. If they have the license, let's get it open.
Yeah. Okay, I just wanted to get that out there. So you know, everybody knew what was going on there and it wasn't misconstrued. Tim?
Uh, Commissioners, uh, the one uh, answer, all, both man doors will have fobs on. Bobberators on, so they're.
Those man doors and the outside doors, so three doors total.
Yes, yes.
Perfect. That way they don't need a key at the same time. They can go in and out.
Right.
Through whatever with.
Yeah, and it'll be secure as well, so.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so Madam Auditor, you, you have something because I know you're here and.
Well, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, you started to address it, but are you going to do a, set a date for that?
Yeah.
Um, are you gonna do that now or are you gonna do that before tomorrow? When is that?
We're gonna do that as.
Before, I, I'd like to set both those meetings before we leave here now, before we adjourn this workshop. If we possibly could, we can bring Dawn in. Um, potentially we can get this thing, get these two meetings scheduled.
I have no problem with that. I mean, uh, it's Dawn listening. Somebody. Thank you, Tim. Um, hey, while we're doing this, K O's here. Do we have anything out of a you're just kind of.
We're just here.
Attending with to get us some money?
Yeah, just taking notes.
We're gonna be garnering some big money here soon.
They'll have their big boss to be here tomorrow too.
Okay.
Yeah, start to work on some of the stuff we've talked about in the past.
Um. Be nice to see some dollars rolling through this short. Grant monies. Commissioner, do you have any?
Well, I just want to. I think the maintenance.
Oh, there's a device. Morning, Commissioner. Daryl Dunnigan, uh, facilities. In light of last week's employee transfer and employee resignation, uh, Harlan and I are looking through, looking at budget to prepare to replace those positions. Um, there's a significant shortfall in our payroll budget.
These haven't submitted to, to us or to Sheriff, so we can review that at our meeting next week?
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have everything together.
Okay, great. So I'm good for this pay cycle and the next pay cycle. Well, not the, but just to let you know that about four weeks out.
Do we have an idea, Sheriff, about where we're going with this?
Definitely. Dollars for a lot of different apartments, a lot in our shore. We cut significantly and ways, part of the budget, the rest of the budget was cut. And sort of remunerated. So, and theirs took the heaviest hit. Maintenance. We really can't afford that. We all know these buildings need they need some work done and they're running out of money, just like a lot of these transfers that I'm doing on, on the agendas. Is we had to do the dishwasher for JJC. We also had to have, there was a, a repair at the jail. That was four thousand dollars. And it's, it's a lot. So they are out of money. Out.
We're still paying all the barrels, electric, water, all the utilities.
And I did, um, Commissioner Bernard, I did prepare the letters to send these letters out to the public defenders for the municipalities. I will be checking into Duke Falls. So we're trying to recoup something, anything. And we did just get an updated letter from the defender's office. They, we're not getting eighty-eight percent. We're getting eighty-two.
Next year.
Yeah, next year for twenty-six.
What? Station. That's the opinion.
So that was, that was a, a little bit disappointing. So we're not getting.
Was that cut because they said eighty-eight at the minute?
Next year. Yeah.
Or next year is eighty-two. Next year is eighty-two.
So that will, that will hit the, the general funds.
Disgusting.
I have a, I have a schedule up, but um, sometimes there are differences between our calendars. So.
Okay.
Are you looking for this advisory?
So your advisory and budget hearing.
Okay, so do you want to do next Tuesday? Thirty-first in the afternoon, after the workshop for one of them?
Week.
The twenty-ninth, yes. Yes.
I personally would like to do one Tuesday and one Wednesday if we can. I know we have a quarter hearing Wednesday.
The thirty-second, there's a lot, there's a public hearing at night. There's a lot of that. Uh, there's an advisory and investment advisory meeting, then our regular meeting. Um, two, um, there's some.
Is the investment advisory at nine-thirty? For ten, ten.
Who's up for it?
It looks like two, two. Then there's a seventh and a third.
Four Bushneys in here, thirty.
No, it's on the third floor. On the third, yeah.
Oh, I guess you asked.
On Wednesday, there's a.
Oh, or revision. Because they were just your, my schedule for you to accept the first ten in one hour. That's why it's on. The twenty-ninth is free up.
Only we do, like, like you said, uh, Commissioner, we do twenty-nine and thirties because of following week. Um, we have Insight coming.
Yeah, that's gonna be, can't, matter of fact, I was gonna say, Lisa.
And if, if the agenda stays light like it is tomorrow, you know, meeting shouldn't be long. We can do it right after.
Right. Why don't we do the senior advisory at noon on Tuesday and do the other one at uh, one o'clock on Wednesday?
Or soon, or you want to do, just do it one on Wednesday?
Just to give a space that would be able to get lunch in between or whatever they need. We don't want to keep our staff.
Twenty-ninth and thirtieth.
Okay, so you're saying on the twenty-ninth, senior.
Yes.
Twenty-ninth.
Advisor. And at, at noon? And the thirtieth is uh, budget at one?
I'll email Diane and make sure all the board members can come on the twenty-ninth.
Diane.
Oh.
Diane is listening?
Yeah.
Is she okay with that? I want to put her on.
She wants to start six. She wants to talk.
Oh, she wants to talk? You there, Diane?
Start six, Diane.
Okay, um.
No, Diane?
Sheriff wants to know if we could do the budget meeting on the Monday.
Why are we putting a dress up?
I mean, if we were to do that, I'd like to do it in the morning, early morning.
Twenty instead of the thirty. I'm just thinking, the quicker we do it, the better off we are. Well, and another, Alex, you can take each other question that's gonna ask too, because I think there's, I just want the words to be sure of what the content of the meeting is. It's to go over the mid-year review, correct? Not.
Yes.
Uh, okay. Well, for everybody listening, I think it's really important to that. You know, we're not bringing, they're not bringing the twenty-six numbers. This is just to do right now.
Twenty-six numbers are.
Because that will just.
That will every. Well, no, we can't do that. And typically, we don't do that anyway. That's what happens is the mid-year is, yeah, that, that's for no number. This mid-year for tw- twenty-twenty-six is for the alternative tax budget. That's due now. So everything that's entered into MUNIS, that's how they, they accomplish those numbers. So that will be fine. That's non-issue. Right now, we didn't, we need to discuss. Yeah, they still.
They still have to put it in, but just till everybody, because I feel like there's.
They give the Commissioners Office.
There's confusion. So you still have to put your mid-year in. Yeah, somebody's not saying you don't have to do that. No, but the goal of the budget review meeting is for twenty-twenty. Day before decides it to be, is a mid-year review. Because we have multiple departments entering that room.
When's the, when's the next budget commission meeting?
Budget commission is it's the following week. It's uh, August fourth.
But it doesn't really matter whether we do it to twenty-eighth or thirtieth. As long as we're ready for, 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 but we can keep it at thirty of them.
Okay.
It'll probably be along the.
You guys have.
We're here all day anyway.
Yeah, we're big.
I'll, I'll email Diane.
So then we are.
See if Diane has it.
Twenty-ninth.
Or maybe we'll go try to call her, Dawn, if she can in there. And if she says there's no way she can do it on Tuesday, come back and let us know, please.
Yeah, we'll just.
Yeah.
Can afford.
Okay, I don't know if I should bring it up, but I think I have to. Um, since the auditor's here. Martha, there was a letter circulated around the building signed by the auditor and I T.
Signed by the auditor.
Well, it says on here, it's from thank you, Trumbull County Auditor, G I S Tax Map and I T.
Auditor's office.
Doesn't say offices.
That is what they're referring to. I'll, I'll address this.
Yes. And it's basically telling people to call the Commissioners, rattle our cages and make noise to give you your budget.
Union members created this on their own initiative with their own computers, own paper and ink on their own time. They have a right to free speech. I have requested that they refrain from passing out at the counter pending a prosecutor's opinion. I did not write that letter. It's from my employees, specifically my union employees. If you care to infringe on union employees' free speech, you can take that up with us.
Doesn't mention anything about the unions letter. It says the auditor.
They wrote it. Audit means the auditor's office. That, I, I did not write it. I saw it after it was texted out. Actually, a text from you to someone else is when I saw it. I did not write it, but every single word in it is true.
Oh, I just don't think we should have every department out there bashing the Commissioners, saying, give them their budget. They work hard. They need their budget when we have all these departments.
They have free speech.
So do we. And we don't bash you on the stuff mistakes your, your office makes.
Absolutely you do. Absolutely you have. As a matter of fact, you've spoken, um, you've misinformed the public early on as to my duty as to whether I need to be here in these meetings. These aren't my meetings. These are your meetings. It is not part of my statutory duty to be here. I only need to be here when there's something I need to explain. But you publicly said that I was not doing my statutory duty. And there have been other opportunities as well.
I think we do a good job with our staff of not bashing other departments or calling them out on mistakes or calling them out to lobby people against. And I think this letter was just.
Thank you.
Take it up with the union members.
Well, I, I.
And it should be distributed over, you know, on more time to customers.
Malloy, I think you're talking about this letter that I have in my hand. I don't see anything where it says about the union. It's, says, thank you for all your time and consideration. Trumbull County Auditor, G I I S Tax Map and I T Departments. Okay, so, um. I mean, everybody understands we can only budget the money that we have, the money that you tell us that we have. So, uh, and all departments are important, but uh, you know, that's one of the decisions that we have as Commissioners. Um, we would like to give everybody the money. But when you have seventy-one million dollars in requests and you only have sixty-four million, you have to cut somewhere. And uh, hopefully, uh, we can all get along, try to work it out, not pit one department against another department. And uh, because we're all in this together, you know, we're all working for the taxpayers. So uh, doesn't do us any good to to put a wedge in here. So uh, you know, we'll work it out. We'll see where we go. Well, Commissioners, that's the goal. The goal is to work together, make this work. We only have so many monies to go around. We never did say that we were going to not fund the auditor or the other departments. We do have to fund those departments as well as many. Board of Elections, they have to have elections. The auditor has to do her business, has to do this, you know, the, the, for the will of the people, the service, our recorder, recorder's office. Uh, it's just that we're not sure about we just don't know the amounts. And as we go, you know, you, like we said before, you can't squeeze blood out of a rock. We only have so much to go around, but we're not in this to cut the departments to where they can't do their job or the, you know, the, the work that they're supposed to do. So, um, just in closing, we're gonna delegate monies and we're gonna appropriate monies. It's just that we need to know how much we have to do that.
Monies that we have.
The monies that we have to do that, so. Um.
And everybody knew that, that's smart, you know, they knew, they knew the financial problem that we were in, okay? And uh, we don't like it. They don't like it.
Right.
But we can only budget the money that we have.
But I do, and I will concur with you and Commissioner Malloy, I do believe that I understand, you know, First Amendment rights, freedom of speech, all this stuff, but to put that type of a letter out is kind of alienating the Commissioners. You know, to put all the blame on the Commissioners when we, we have a job to do and we have to do to the best of our abilities. We take a lot of heat every day from everything that we do. But understand, this is a big county. We cut our own budget, two million dollars. And we're struggling with maintenance and with bill paying and with that's everything involved in the, in the Commissioner's office. So, um. Moving forward, you know, we'll, we'll fund these, these departments, but we just, with what we have, with what we have. Um. Ms. Zinni, you're here. Do you have something?
I was told to come up.
Oh.
J K said my name was mentioned.
Oh, we were asking about Dawn Gideon. But it's nice to see you. But it's, it's nice to see you, you know.
That's on the thirtieth.
And it picks. Yeah.
But you, you do have an ask also for your department where you're falling a little short and you're asking for more funds also?
And we realize that. I mean, everybody is falling short and, you know, we'll, we'll delegate as appropriate as we have the monies to do so.
And we're, and this is something, Sue, we knew it was a process. I remember we had our first budget. You know, auditor, you walked out and said you were gonna have to lay off ten to fourteen people right away. It didn't happen. It didn't happen. We came up with the money at that point to get through. I know you're saying now you got the twenty-ninth to make announcement of July, of July and and further ones. We're hoping to keep stretching that till we get to the end of the year, and nobody gets laid off is our hope in this, but early on.
Since last week, or last week when I told you, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, I will run out of money for, for general fund payroll at the end of October.
And her maintenance just told us they're gonna run out in two weeks.
That does not, and that does not include the money that it costs to lay people off.
Understand. But, but early on.
Mandated services. That's the other.
But early on, you know, it was right away, you were gonna lay people off right away, and it didn't happen. So we're, we can make it through this thing together if we all work together. And that's what's been happening so far.
Well, we have to know how much additional money we have coming.
Correct, and we do have additional money coming in.
Right.
From the estimate we had early on from the auditor, we had last month four hundred thousand dollars more um, from sales tax than we anticipated, and hopefully July will be the same.
Thousand dollars in canceled carryovers. Carryover.
And we probably.
Because I explained that.
And and we need probably four million, so, you know, probably three million short right now. Okay, well, we're gonna have that budget meeting, and, uh, we'll, we'll be able to get some, yeah, we'll get some numbers together, uh, after we have that meeting. Um, is, is there any other business here, while?
Yeah, I just wanna say C J, C J O, um, engineering, finish your, uh, hard enough facility supervisor. C J O, finish your bid packet, uh, this will be going out July thirtieth, if I'm not mistaken, for the stone building.
Okay.
Uh, we're able to make some operations to the project, so, um, that's just a positive.
There was a lot of fluff in it, so we gotta put the fluff as alter, alternates. Stick with the important group of the H V C.
Good, thank you, Daryl. Appreciate it.
Is that it? Yes, Mr. Shaw.
Mike Salmich, Trumbull County Transit Minister, give you a quick update about Garland of closing the doors. I did have a meeting with all the vendors, so we're gonna take on the extra suppliers. Rest suppliers, so there won't be any problem moving uh, clients from Garland over to and there's, in fact, they're working together to figure out what's gonna take one for this nature, so as of right now, less things change. Garland will close the doors September thirtieth. Buyers do not have to worry, they haven't called me, they don't have to worry, they will still have rights. I'll give you that.
Okay. So they wanted to close early, but that's not happening.
Correct. I I don't think, well, I think September thirtieth will be the date. In fact, uh, one of the things that was brought up in the meeting was